And I, in this fashion, the Spicer Group is recommending, I'll touch on that later. But in that Word version of the ordinance I've provided, there's a color scheme to the provisions to give you a general idea of what has changed and what hasn't changed. In instances where the Spicer Group is recommending the deletion of definitions or certain provisions, they are highlighted in red, where they have retained existing provisions or definitions from the citizens ordinance but improved them, they are highlighted in blue. Where completely new definitions or provisions have been added, they are highlighted in green. And finally, there's a number of provisions that are highlighted in yellow, where a specific decision hasn't been made by the Spicer Group yet about how to revise that provision, but instead they've noted concerns with it with some comments in the margin for your consideration. So those are the generally, the four color codes to help you guide your process if you page through the Word version of the ordinance.
Ron, can you go over the color codes?
Yeah, sure. Red are provisions that they are recommending be deleted. Blue are provisions that were in the citizens ordinance but have been reworded to improve them. Green are completely new provisions. And yellow is used to identify potentially problematic provisions that either need to be deleted or revised to address some legal or technical concerns. But no final decision has been made by them at this point.
What's the red, with the line through it?
Uh, that's just, thanks for pointing out by mistake here. That's one where I accidentally forgot to convert it to red highlighting instead of red. Took that right away. So yeah, that's just an instance where I, due to the time shortage, I missed a couple things. Now, my other reason for converting it into this Word ordinance is because the citizens' ordinance as it was drafted was not formatted in any way where it was adaptable into the Douglas Township zoning ordinance. It's just kind of these standalone provisions that it didn't say where in the ordinance it was going to go, how it was going to be incorporated. And also, it had a number of internal cross-references that made no sense because it appeared to have been taken from other communities' ordinance, so it was referencing internally provisions of somebody else's ordinance rather than the Douglas Township ordinance. So when I converted it into a Word version with this color coding, I tried to catch as many of those as I could and correct them. Now, I myself have noted some instances where there's still some I missed and will have to pick those up. But here is the general overall concept that I organized it under with my understanding of how you want to proceed. The ordinance would delete existing section 2.19 of the ordinance entirely, which are the old wind energy provisions that were adopted in 2017. And it would instead include wind energy conversion systems as a special land use that's approvable only in the Ag/R-E district. So to that end, it would include wind energy conversion systems in Table 12.05, which is the table that includes the approvable special land uses and indicates which district they're approvable in. And then in that same chapter, 12 of the zoning ordinance, section 1206, contains the approval standards for all of the various approvable special land uses. And so that's the section of the ordinance as approval standard. It would be 21 where the new wind energy provisions would be adopted. Now, this is one instance where I see I accidentally put in approval standard 20, it's already a 20, so it'd actually be 21. But those things can be fixed. That's generally the overall concept around which the, these new provisions would be adopted into the ordinance.
Would you repeat the types of land again? Ag and, you said two types of land, special use of...
There's, there's, chapter 12 has the special land use table, it's table 1, which lists what the approvable special land uses are and what districts they're approvable in. So wind energy conversion systems would be listed as an approval special land use in the Ag/R-E district. And then under the approval standards of that same chapter, all these provisions of the citizens ordinance as amended, that's where they would be incorporated, in section 12.06. Okay, so those are the two first items that were emailed to you, Spicer's working document in PDF, and then the Word version I created, which will be a better vehicle going forward to have you review and to format the ordinance in the way they want to do in the next step. Now, the other item, or the third item I included was Spicer's proposed draft wind energy ordinance outline. This is what I alluded to previously. It's this one-page document. This is how they would like to reorganize the ordinance, so it is in a flow that makes sense and mimics the same way an application would be received, what its requirements are, when you would review it, when certain steps would occur, including the pre-construction sound study, the post-construction sound study. All these things would be put in a logical flow to mimic how one of these projects would actually unfold if it were proposed in the township. So that would be their next step, is to take these provisions and reorganize them in this fashion. But again, the reason we haven't done this at this point is so it's easier for you to review the changes in the context of the citizens ordinance that you're already familiar with. The last document I provided, and this is from Spicer Group as well, it's a table they put in. It's just a comparison chart of a number of communities in Michigan who have adopted provisions for utility scale wind energy projects, showing what some of the typical types of standards are. And the principal purpose for providing this was to give some examples of setbacks. So this is something we can discuss later, but I just wanted to mention that it's there.
I noticed that there wasn't anything in that last table that was in the citizens' ordinance. Not, not anything in the examples.
Well, actually, some of them are.
I looked through it pretty close.
I mean, for example, that, we, what, the citizens ordinance, well, when you say citizens ordinance or the what?
So-called.
Yeah. Well, you're, you're right. There's not much...
And there's a lot of red.
Yeah. So that's the overall procedural context in which this is presented to you and what the documents are. Now, with that said, I'll move forward with describing to you the general category of the principal changes the Spicer Group is recommending and are reflected in the draft Definitions. A number of definitions have been removed that really have no purpose under the ordinance, particularly in light of the fact that the sound provisions, as they are drafted, are based on L-MAX standards. As a preview to the sound provisions, the ordinance has been drafted by Spicer Group in a way that the sound levels prescribed by the ordinance are true maximums, meaning that the maximum level can never be exceeded. It is not, it is not an LQ or an L90 or an L10, which are all various forms of averaging the sound from wind turbines. Because there will be no averaging under the ordinance as it's proposed, those terms, those definitions are not needed. There's a lot of definitions that needed to be added in conjunction with the provisions for sound study. Frankly, the sound study provisions of the citizen ordinance were just completely inadequate. And this is where the most change to the ordinance has occurred. And in connection with that, there's a lot of terms that need to be defined in order to apply those sound provisions. So definitions is the first big area of change. It's minor, but new provisions have been added with respect to exempt wind energy conversion systems, either the small, non-utility grade ones. There's new provisions added to regulate the safety of these structures more thoroughly. I would point out that the, the sound provisions that were in the citizens ordinance for these exempt towers make reference to sound provisions that do not exist. There are no sound provisions in the existing Douglas Township ordinance that can be incorporated by reference for these exempt turbines. And the township only has a very general regulatory ordinance on noise that just prevents unreasonable levels of noise generally. So if there's going to be any standards that are incorporated for the exempt towers, it would be incorporating that regulatory ordinance only. Next, with regard to the review procedures, the ordinance now provides for a two-step process where there is a decision on the special land use itself, separate and apart from the detailed site plan review. The idea being that you'd review a project on a high level, if you will, first, to determine whether it comports with the general special land use standards of the ordinance. And provided the project is approvable in concept, there would then be a second level of review where you'd sit down with a detailed site plan and provide it's acceptable. That's where the real meat of approval of the specifics of the project would occur. The next principal area that's addressed is escrows. This was a very good feature in general of the citizens ordinance in that it was very thorough about escrows, almost unnecessarily so, in that it talked about escrows, and I think about five different spots and what they would be required for. It's just not really necessary to do it in that way. You can have a single escrow provision that talks about all the types of functions for which escrows are required, so they have been consolidated into a single provision of the ordinance.
So you, for that one, you're describing it as an area of escrow and then a listing of types of esc, reasons for escrow, or are you saying it's a, here's the amount for escrow?
There is one provision that requires an escrow and states all the various functions for which escrows can be required, which is both application review, hiring of the township's own experts, the conducting of your own parallel sound study, and a variety of other matters. So there won't be separate pools for, for different purposes. There will be one escrow. Typically, for a project of a utility scale turbine, you'll see communities requiring upfront somewhere from $50,000 to $100,000. And that amount is subject to replenishment as the project moves forward if it turns out not to be sufficient. But that's usually the amount that will get you through the review process. Post-construction sound study, they'd probably have to supplement that. Okay, then there's vastly improved site plan provisions. There is far more robust standards for the site plan requirements they would have to fulfill when coming in for approval of the project. Next is site lighting. There is significantly improved provisions that provide an explicit requirement for applicants to apply for approval from the FAA for an ADLS system. That's the Aircraft Detection Lighting System, which would mean that the lights will not be on all the time. They would only be activated at such time when an aircraft is within an area that they would have a risk of encountering one of the towers. So that's a significant improvement, and they would be required to apply for that in connection with this type of project. The decommissioning provisions have also been greatly improved. That was in the citizens' ordinance, but there needed to be a whole lot more meat on the bone there, and there is much more robust requirements for decommissioning, including the financial requirements for decommissioning, which were inadequate in dollar amount in the citizens ordinance. The setbacks have been adjusted. I'll tell you, frankly, the provisions of the citizens' ordinance on setback were one of the areas where the ordinance was almost certainly subject to legal challenge, in that the 330 feet height combined with the five times setback was almost certainly made a project impossible. The setbacks in the ordinance are based on fixed distances for towers, and Spicer has provided some ranges for you to consider. That's perhaps one high-level thing that we can touch on as we start looking at the ordinance. A similar comment with respect to height. The 330-foot standard was deemed impractical and likely exclusionary in light of the scale of projects that are now being built. 330 feet is not anything that's done in the industry anymore. A range of 500 to 600 feet is more in keeping with what's a viable project anymore. The provisions on electromagnetic interference have been improved. On the subject of use agreements, there have been detailed requirements added for both a road use agreement to which the township and the county road commissioner would both be parties, and also drain use agreements for which the township and the drain commissioner or water resource commissioner would all be parties. This is a particularly important aspect of these ordinances, and which is not adequately addressed in the citizens ordinance, because if you have any familiarity with these projects, they really do do damage to roads and bridges when they come in, because they're moving in such enormous equipment that you really do have to have adequate provisions on this subject, including videotaping the whole route before they come in. So you have a standard at which to judge the damage against that they'll have to repair. The shadow flicker provisions has also been greatly improved, consistent with maximal protection of those who don't intend to participate in this structure. The ordinance provides for zero hours of shadow flicker on non-participating properties, and for not more than 30 hours per year on participating inhabited structures. There is improved provisions for both avian impact and other environmental impact studies. And then noise. This is where you'll see most of the green in the ordinance of new provisions. The provisions that were in there before were just simply very inadequate for the purpose of conducting a sound survey at a wind energy site with a lack of technically sound testing procedures. But as I alluded to earlier, the maximum noise standards are based on L-MAX, not based on LQ or any other averaging standard. And this is perhaps one of the high-level issues we can look at tonight, because there's a table one which has the maximum sound levels for participating and non-participating properties, both day and nighttime standards that can be looked at. And these provisions cover the testing procedures and requirements both for pre-construction background study, the, the post-construction study, which must be completed within a year, and also for routine operations to address situations where there might be subsequent noise complaints. Finally, in the compliance provisions, there is some penalties written in there that are not authorized by state law or otherwise conflict with the existing penalty provisions of the zoning ordinance, and so those have been made consistent with what state law and the zoning ordinance allow. Okay, so that's, that's the major categories of change. Here is perhaps some high-level issues we can look at tonight if, if you would like. I don't know how much you want to get into, given the shortness of time you've had to even look at these documents, but some of the main things that will probably be principal points of concern for you are the noise standards, what the DBA ratings are for participating and non-participating properties, and hours a day, setbacks for towers, and then also kind of your, your overall mechanism by which you want to, to regulate this land use. Now, I, I think it's consistent with what you've discussed this point to include it as a special land use in the Ag district, and that's how the ordinance is organized. But a secondary question that you might want to talk about as we move forward is whether you want to put any further restrictions on that as to whether there's only particular areas of the Ag/R-E district where you want to have this type of use approvable. And so you could, in conjunction with this, create a wind energy overlay that further limits the area in the Ag district where this can be allowed, or oftentimes it's easier to have it be a anti-wind overlay to designate the, the areas of the Ag district where you wouldn't want this use, or within some setback where you wouldn't want it to be. And typically, that would be around lakes or other significant bodies of water. So that's another high-level topic we could perhaps discuss tonight. So, sound levels, setbacks, which is really intertwined with tower height, and then the overall permitting procedure and whether you want to further limit with an overlay. I know that was an awful lot to digest, but that's, that's really a high-level view of what's in front of you. Happy to answer any questions or however you want to proceed at this point, Mr. Chairperson.
Any questions? I know everybody, there's a lot of, like, Ron said, there's a lot of...
May I have that little list?
Yeah, I've got it.
Okay.
Ron, one question I got about the, the noise standards. So this, this ordinance, if we put a standard of noise, a level on that, well, that can't be enforced on any other type of noise in the township then, correct?
These standards are specific to the turbines, yes.
So racetracks, anything like that, the noise coming off those?
Well, the only, the only thing that those other uses are subject to, as I mentioned, there's a regulatory ordinance that's pretty old. Get a copy of it. It's ordinance number two, adopted in 1983, which just has a general prohibition against the creation of unreasonable or unnecessary loud noises or disturbance that are injurious to the public health, peace, or quiet. So all other uses are subject to that standard. Now...
Can I ask a question along, kind of following that?
Sure.
You were talking about the, kind of the more individual use of a wind turbine, and you mentioned sound, and I wasn't sure if you meant the sound limits would be the same for an exempt WC, or do we have to state that separately, that if someone was to put up for personal use?
The, the way the citizens' ordinance was written, it said exempt wind energy facilities were subject to the noise provisions stated in section such and such and such and such of the ordinance. Well, the problem is that was adopted from somebody else's ordinance, so the sections that references it don't even exist.
Okay.
There's not even any noise provisions anywhere in the zoning ordinance. So the way we've addressed that for now is to suggest that the exempt towers just be subject to the general noise ordinance. Now, you may or may not want to do that. You might want to make them subject to the same standards as utility grade, utility towers. That's a policy decision we'll need to make going forward. But to more fully inform the discussion on this subject, the, the sound table, the maximum sound level table is table one at page 26 of the, the Word version. And the standards are this. For a participating parcel, during daytime hours of 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, the maximum sound level would be 50 DVA. From 10:00 PM at night to 7:00 AM, it would be 45. For non-participating parcels, from 7:00 AM to 10:00, it would be 45, and a nighttime limit from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM would be 40 DVA.
Does it stay at the property line?
Yeah, these are parcels, not, not dwellings.
Ron, you know we hit the board. You know we hit the board?
Uh, let's see. I can tell you.
Yep.
Yeah, it was, um... It was 35 DVA LMAX at the property point or any point within a non-participating property. It was 45 LMAX for non-participating properties, or 55 DVA at night. Now, one of the things that was just flatly wrong about the citizen provisions here, it refers to LMAX measurements, and then says in parentheses after that, no averaging. That's a non sequitur. LMAX, LMAX is an averaging function.
Yeah.
So it didn't make sense in that respect.
Really high at one point, and then really low at one point, and then whatever the average, that's the...
Well, that, that's a little bit misleading to look at it that way, because even if LMAX would be typically in a short duration, where what, how the sound study would be designed is you would try to target the times when the wind turbine is noisiest, and take a 10-minute period where the loudest conditions exist, and then you would average over those 10 minutes. So it's an average, but, but not in the way where you think. It's not a 24-hour average, where sometimes it's zero and sometimes it's 100 and ends up 50. No, it'd be nothing like that. LMAX is usually a 10-minute period, and so you're looking at what the average is within the loudest times. So you target the times when it's operating at its highest speed under conditions where it generates the most noise and average over 10 minutes. We've gone more conservative than that in the proposed draft, where it's, it's a straight-up max. Whatever the loudest is, you can, it can never exceed the maximum at its loudest point.
So you, the first thing you described, you referred to as LMAX or as... I thought you, just now you used LMAX for both things that we explained.
It's possible I might have misspoke. LMAX is a fixed point. It is the loudest thing in it. LQ is what I meant to say. I might have misspoken. LQ is an averaging, but again, it's not a 24-hour average. But that was kind of a non sequitur in the citizens' ordinance. It said LQ, but then said no averaging. LQ is an averaging. So in, in some respects, it's, it's, it's more restrictive by using LMAX. The citizens' ordinance did have a lower requirement of 35 DVA for non-participating parcels.
I know the citizens also included anywhere on the parcel, not just the parcel edge, because I know noise can bounce and move. Like, there are times we can hear the people at the racetrack, and they're over two miles away, and you think they were in the yard talking with us for the evening, or screaming with us, really. So by saying just partial, parcel edge, or the, the parcel, the citizen ordinance, I think, when I met with the group of citizens, they were concerned about, well, what if it is, you know, bouncing, moving, because sound isn't just linear?
I'll include that as a, a point for Spicer Group to address in this next go-around to make sure, if, if the planning commission's consensus is that, should be the case to incorporate that type of...
I myself would like to see the non-participating parcel be at 35 during nighttime, because that change of five isn't like five little steps. Every five is actually a doubling of the noise. So the change to 35 to 45, or 35 to 40 that Spicer did here is a big change.
One thing I might say about the noise level is, the last township board meeting, they were going to hire a sound specialist, and they tabled that, and so next week's meeting, they're gonna debate that too. So we may want to see what they do, if they're gonna hire a sound specialist or not, before we get too radical with the, the sound issue. Yeah, I, you know, that's whatever the committee wants to do.
Okay, now, the other high-level topic I mentioned was setbacks and tower height. Again, what Spicer was written in is a range, a height of, it should be less than 500 to 600, and that was a range for consideration for setbacks. It suggested a range between 1,320 feet and 2,000 feet for setbacks for non-participating parcels. For inhabited structures, the suggested range was somewhere between 1,400 and 1,600 feet. From a road right of way, or railroad right of way, it would be 1.5 times the tip height for a maximum of 1,000 feet.
What page you got?
Yeah, I'm sorry. This is page 18. It's all in green at the top there. Public utility lines, again, 1.5 times the hub height or tip height for 1,000 feet. Met towers, 1.5 times the tip height of the scatter for a met tower. And for buildings, just the standard setbacks that would apply in the district. So at page 18 there is, is the range of setbacks they're suggesting for... So at page 18 there is, is the range of setbacks are, uh, suggesting for discussion. Again, we don't necessarily need any decision on that tonight. I just bring it to your attention as one of the probably the high-level areas of concern that you probably want to digest, think about, and be prepared to discuss at the next one.
When you talk about being challenged in court, what about, um, a court case that has already been won and determined? Wouldn't that be something that the courts would refer back to?
Well, um, if there is a, if there is a published court opinion by a Michigan State Court, uh, that is on point and addresses the exact same subject of something that might be litigated under this ordinance, then it is controlling for that purpose.
The John Shack V Bay Township, it's a US District Court, Western District of Michigan?
Yeah, which would not be binding on a Michigan State Court.
Even though it was a US District Court?
That's correct. That's a federal court applying, presumably, uh, Michigan law, which is not binding on any Michigan court, state court.
But it was binding in this case.
Well, it controls the parties to that case, and that's it.
So, in other words, we don't really know what the actual guideline limitations are legally?
Uh, well, there's, there's certain, uh, there hasn't been much litigation of this at the Michigan State Court level. There, there's been some federal court cases. The way more to look at the, um, legal issues here is to know, from a practical standpoint, if you have a standard that makes the project impossible, uh, for example, a tower height of 330 feet with five times setback, there, there is no place in the township where tower could be cited under that. So you don't need a, a court case to tell you that. You need to plot that out on the township plat map and see that that's exclusionary. So that, you don't necessarily need a court case to tell you something's unreasonable. If you've got a standard that does not make the project at all feasible, uh, that's problematic. I mean, the, the, the more authentic thing to do, if you want to prohibit turbines and roll the dice in court, that you can defend a complete exclusion, and just completely exclude the use and fight that in court, uh, rather than go through the charade of adopting something that looks legal, but, uh, in practice, totally exclude projects.
Why, why do you say the 330 is... You just said that the scope of the projects are getting...